And we're, I'm going to call the order, the Board of Appeals for the town of Duxbury. We have a public hearing tonight. We have a couple of matters on. The first matter is ZBIA case 2025-01, which means it's the first matter of 2025. Pursuant to the Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, this meeting will be conducted in person and as a courtesy via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public and to the board members, this meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless required by law. This meeting will be recorded by the local scene, formerly known as PAC TV. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so by watching the Duxbury government access channels, Verizon 39 or Comcast 9. You can also see it on Duxbury YouTube. That is the required public notice about remote participation, which I hope that the governor's office chooses to continue, but we don't know that they will do so. All right, so we have one, the first matter on for tonight. The Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing here in the mural room, 878 Tremont Street, and via Zoom to consider the application of Melanie and Sean Kennedy for a special permit under Articles 400 and 900, sections 401, 401.2, 401.4, 401.0.4, and 906.2 of the Duxbury protective bylaw. The property is located at 15 Summer House Lane, parcel number 097-065-020 of the Duxbury assessor's map, consisting of .51 acres in the residential compatibility district and owned by the applicants. They propose to raise and rebuild a pre-existing non-conforming garage. A special permit is required. The application may be reviewed at the town's website, under the zoning board of appeals page, or in the municipal services department. Those folks who are differently abled, we will make accommodation for. All right. We have an application which describes the project. A series of photographs, well, a letter from Rockwood Design. It says, "On behalf of my clients, Sean and Melanie Kennedy, I respectfully request a special permit to demolish the existing non-conforming garage and build a new mudroom connector to a new two-car garage. The existing garage sideline setbacks will be maintained and the front setback met for this new structure. Please reference the plot plan completed by James McGrath. The street is all residential and a new house just got built across the street. The exterior styling will be keeping with the Cape style of the existing house and is modest in scale. We look forward to getting this project approved and starting construction." And this is from Mr. Baker, who is a master of architecture. We've got a series of photographs of what looks to be the existing garage. We have some design plans and a site plan relative to the new proposal. We got a memo from the Conservation Commission through the conservation administrator concluding it does not fall within the jurisdiction of the CONCOM and no review is required. The health agent indicates that the Board of Health will require a passing Title V for this property prior to signing off for a building permit. The planning board indicates that they unanimously chose to defer judgment to us. And the design review board indicates that the petitions are requesting to raise an existing detached garage and subsequently build a two-story attached garage and primary bedroom suite in its place. The DRB discussed the petition's request. The board suggested the proposed door leading out to the back of the house from the mudroom be relocated as to align under the second story window. In addition, the board recommended consolidating the two landings from the mudroom and the sitting room into one. There was also a discussion related to drainage to ensure the stormwater flows from Summer House Lane are accounted for in the site design since the house and the proposed addition are at a lower elevation than the roadway. Overall, the board acknowledged the aesthetic improvements in this project and believes the special permit would benefit the town and has no objections." You get anything else?
No.
All right, so that's the entirety of the submissions today.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'm not with an individual in the front row that I believe is probably involved in this situation, a little concerned about potential conflict.
In what way?
I'm wondering what her involvement, is this your house?
No, this is our house.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
RBF designed their house. Phil Baker is my boss at Rockwood, is the owner of Rockwood Design. Coincidentally, we have the same ZBIA meeting.
Who's?
So it's my company, but Phil, my partner, did their job.
Yeah, yeah.
We had nothing to do with it.
No.
They're not here on our behalf.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Just checking. Just checking.
Yeah.
All right.
Just to be clear, it's a public hearing.
Anybody can show up. You know, everybody gets to show up. So the way we do these, we first hear from the applicant, and you got to do it at the microphone because we do this on TV. And then the Board will ask questions. To the extent the applicant can answer the questions, I encourage them to do so. And then what we'll do is we'll open it up for public comment. We have five members of the Board, and I think everybody who's here can sit. And I think Tanya and Judy, are you both good to sit on this one?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So we have enough Board members. So why don't we hear from the applicant as to the proposal, and then we will ask questions. And you got to go to the microphone in order for this to work.
So we're looking for a summary of our project from kind of our perspective.
Yep. And the first thing you have to do is tell me who you are and where you live.
Sure.
And I think it's 18 Summer House Lane. I'm just making a guess.
I'm Sean Kennedy. This is my wife, Melanie Kennedy, and we live at 15 Summer House Lane.
All right. Great.
So currently, we have a detached two-car garage on the property, and our proposal or our plan is to demo the detached garage and rebuild a two-car garage with a connecting mudroom to the main house. Additionally, it will have a primary suite above the garage to accommodate our growing family.
Do you want to approve that?
Yeah.
No bags under our eyes and giant belly.
I would like to withdraw the question from Mr. Wazalowski. So in what way are you currently non-conforming?
Currently, the back corner of the existing garage is five feet eight from the property line between us and our neighbor.
Have you talked to your neighbor about your proposal?
So it's a little bit of a unique situation. The neighbor that was there when we moved in two and a half, three years ago.
Almost four, yeah.
Almost four, sold the house within the last couple of months to a company called Open Door, and that company comes in, kind of refreshes the house, cleans it out, and then flips it, I guess you could say. So we don't have any contact with the people that live next door. They kind of come and go during working hours. So to answer your question, no, we have not talked to the abutter.
And the new, and the new proposed garage and connection doesn't get any closer to the lot line than you already are at, which is 5.8 feet?
Correct. It does not. So on the back side of the garage, we're proposing to add a, we're calling it a sunroom, and the back corner matches the existing setback and gets no closer.
So there isn't a neighbor, an owner next door? It's owned by a developer?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
I would imagine it goes on the market in a couple of weeks. I don't know.
Yeah, seems like they're done.
But there's nobody living there.
All right. And the lot, there's no lot coverage issue?
Six to nine.
Yeah. Doesn't make any difference.
Mm-hmm. But it's an increase in non-conforming volume because the?
Because we're going up. Correct.
You're going up and back, right?
We're going up and back. We are getting further away from the street.
As you go back.
Correct.
Which is the elevation from the east?
So that's from Summer House Lane.
Okay.
Looking at the front of the house.
Looking east, right?
That would be looking east.
Yeah, that is looking east.
Correct. That's looking from the abutter on the side of the non-conforming setback.
And right now, it's just a one-story garage?
Correct.
And all your neighbors had notice of this thing?
Mm-hmm.
Nobody seems to show up?
Correct.
No, they're all very excited.
Looks like a nice project. Does the Board have questions?
Do we have a height calculation on it?
It's the same, it's on the table.
We filled out the table within the application, yes.
Yeah, it is in the application.
What's the calculation?
The height.
Okay.
The height increased by three feet, three and a half feet above the tallest point of the house.
Existing is 20 feet. Proposed is 23.5.
So the midline?
Uh, it doesn't specify.
Jim, did you look at it?
I did, yeah.
I think.
They're below 30 feet, but they're about 16, 17.
I'm sorry. Could you, this is Tanya. Could you just clarify that because I'm looking at the application itself, and the building height is listed as existing is 18 feet, proposed 18 feet and a 0% change.
I'm confused too, Tanya, for the same reason.
You know what? We have two.
The application did get tweaked. Jim met with Melanie last week or the week before, Jim, and I believe the table did get tweaked. Is that the?
That's the one I see.
Yep, that's the new one on the screen.
Six. We have two pages.
The existing garage is about 12 feet, I would say, to the midline. That would make sense, yeah.
The proposed is. Received on different dates with different heights. So that's, that is confusing. Right. Well, I got one received January 22, and I got one received February 18.
Right.
The February 18 one probably has the.
Yeah, do you have two tables there?
Yes.
Yeah, the first two tables were, should have been scrapped from there because I had met with the applicants and they redid the table twice because it wasn't accurate. The one thing I didn't pay attention to was the height because I looked at the overall height and said it was below 30 feet, and I didn't pay a lot of attention to that.
But, so the table from January 22 shows building height at 20 feet, and the proposed at 23 and a half, and now the one from February 18 shows 18 and 18.
Right.
Yeah, I think they went to peak height on that.
They tweaked and went down?
I'm not sure why the building height changed. I know the other calculations relative to site coverage were corrected because those were incorrect. Building height is not correct on the new application on.
Should have swapped.
Right. They should have been swapped.
Yeah. Because I have the email right here. I was on.
All right. So they're going to the midpoint on the existing.
Can you read the writing on the side?
The midpoint would be right there.
14, oh.
Well.
So.
Oh, no.
These are all eight inch.
Actually.
So the mid.
That is.
The midpoint of the half-sap.
The February 18 one is the one with the correct coverage calculations.
Yeah.
But what's.
19.5.
Incorrect on that is the existing building height and the proposed building height, 18 feet.
So now.
Existing and, because the existing building. Hold on, I'm going to clarify that. Missed that one.
It doesn't show you the six, the 12. Height on the elevation.
13. I think the existing billing height is about 13 feet.
Can we have a corrected table so we all are talking about the same numbers?
So that's like 19.5 to the midpoint of the shed.
Oh, you're calling the shed? They were asking about the garage.
Just the garage.
Right.
Yeah, the garage was 13.6.
Right.
To the ridge.
To the ridge, not the midpoint, so that's more.
Right.
I don't have the midpoint for anything.
The question is, are you asking for the overall height of the house, just at the ridge?
We're talking about the non-conforming part of the structure, which is the garage, which is what?
Well, I have the, to the ridge, which is 13.6.
Right. And halfway up.
Unless I'm looking at this wrong, it doesn't have, it doesn't show you the.
So here's the, here's the existing garage. So what do you, what do you want to take from midpoint?
Yeah, midpoint.
Great.
That midpoint, yeah.
How it's supposed to be.
So that's like 11 feet.
Yeah. And the proposed is.
You want to go by this or the dormer? The dormer is the whole, is most.
Go by the dormer.
Doesn't show up to the midline.
So midpoint of the dormer is 9, is called 20 feet.
Yeah.
Is that 20 feet out?
I want to write that on that. Hold on. Again.
Great change.
Got it. The existing, what did you say that was?
12 or 11?
The midpoint's 11.
Yeah.
There seems to be, there seems to be a lot of discussion about the height of the array of structures. Any of these measured from the midpoint of the?
That's what we're going to right now.
Okay.
Of just the garage.
I'm going to clarify that in two seconds.
Doesn't, doesn't look like great changes.
Who is the midpoint of that existing? Existing was 11.
The plan was a great.
And the proposed, if you're going to, well, that point looks like 19.5.
Yeah. Thank you.
Help?
Yes, it does. So the existing billing height, billing height to the midpoint, what, what the applicant did was use the.
The building.
Building height of the main building and not the non-conforming part.
Right.
So the garage average mean height is 11 feet and the proposed is 19.5.
To the center line of the roof?
Correct. And the center line of the dormer part of the roof because.
The.
80% of this room.
Sounds like it conforms. It sounds like it's fine. Anybody have further questions? Do we feel like we need an updated application?
Can we condition it?
We could certainly condition it that it complies with the 30-foot requirement.
Jim should expect a revised plan and application.
Judy, you want to weigh in here?
Now, I just don't feel comfortable voting on this. I may not have two different tables here, and I appreciate, you know, Jim's effort to help. I appreciate everybody's effort to help, always on this board, but I don't feel prepared to vote on this with the application as I have it here. I just don't.
I would tend to agree with Judy on that.
All right.
I mean, I can send over the updated table. It would take me a minute to change it on my computer and email it over. We've been waiting for this meeting for a long time, and I'm due with my second baby in four days, so we're dying to break ground.
Especially given, you know, it's, it's well within the conforming mansions.
Yeah, and modest in size compared to the houses that have been built around us in the last 12 months. When we moved in, we were surrounded by forests, and it's all been taken down. We're surrounded by mansions now, and we just need the space as well. So it's a, it's a huge improvement, and it's just a modest garage with a dormer.
So what, when's the next, when's our next one?
March 13.
Okay. So in order to pass a special permit, you're going to need four out of five?
Sure.
I, I heard at least two people wanting more information. I think the likelihood is that we should continue to March 13.
Is there any way we could ask either Judy or Tanya for reconsideration?
We, we can, but just to be clear with you.
Sure.
Even if we voted this today, this Board has almost three months in which to actually provide a special permit. So the notion that we're going to push this a couple of weeks, I think is insignificant overall, and if members of this Board want more and clearer information, I'm going to support them on that, but we. Judy, Tanya, what would you prefer to do?
Well, I would just point out that the Planning Board's memo that us dated, I think it was February 11th, asked for the calculations to be checked, and it's now February 27th, and I'm just looking at the packet that was, that I received, and there's no corrected calculations in it. So I, I feel like I'm kind of being put on the spot here. I just want to have a correct application to vote on. I don't think it's too much to ask.
I can make a comment on that. I did meet with the applicants, and shame on me, I missed the building height because we were, we were focusing on coverage calculations that were incorrect. So we clarified all those. I met with the applicant, and I missed the building height because we were so focused on that. That's on me.
I understand. I do, Jim, but just, I would feel more comfortable if I had an accurate representation of what's being proposed. That's all.
Okay.
Tanya?
I agree with Judy. I agree with Judy. And, and we appreciate Jim working with the applicant, but Jim's not responsible for the correct calculations. The applicant is responsible ultimately, so.
All right. So I'm going to, I'm going to make a suggestion here, is that we continue to March 13. My expectation is if we get all the numbers right, that this is going to be fairly easy to do, but that's my suggestion.
Thank you for your time.
I think what we're looking for is the height from the midline of the roof to a grade 20 feet in front of the house.
Because that's how the bylaw works. So I'm, I'm going to move that we continue to March 13.
Second.
All in favor? I, Wayne.
I, Judy.
I, Tanya.
I, Freeman.
All right.
I, Phil.
We're going to move, and, and we fully understand the level of urgency here, and we'll deal with that on, on the end where we write the opinion.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Good night, thanks.
Thanks. All right. The next matter up is an administrative review of a case we've already heard, 2024-21 Mead and Rogier, 146 Gurnett Road. The applicants are requesting to revise the approved plans to replace the spiral staircase intended for access to upper-level rooftop balcony with an enclosed stair tower. The Board needs to determine whether it's a substantial or insubstantial modification of Special Permit 2024-21. Just so everybody understands this, if it's insubstantial, we can approve it or consider it and vote on it, and if it's substantial, we need to have a further public hearing. So let's hear from the applicant, and again, we do it at the microphone. Do you want to review that? Do we need to review that before we hear from the applicant? Oh, did we get a Designer Review Board?
We did.
All right. So, yeah, Phil provided me a memo from the Designer Review Board at a regular meeting. They discussed the proposed revisions. They discussed the proposed revisions. We agree that the proposed stairs as revised are preferable to the circular stairway originally proposed and we favor its approval. In addition, during our discussions, the applicants agreed to incorporate these design modifications. The proposed stair would be clad in the same material as the main mass of the building facade in order to reduce the visual impact. The crawl space under the structure will be masked with vertical slats separated by a one-inch gap. Balcony railings and materials will be uniform, either traditional ballisters or wire cable, but not both. Okay. We got anything else on this?
Got it. Yeah. Do you have a set of plans?
No, I think I do have a set of plans.
Yeah.
Yep. All right. We got a site plan and a revised site plan relative to 146 Gurnett Road. Lauren, anything else?
Yes.
All right. All right. So why don't we hear from the applicant or the applicant's agent?
I'm Dick, hello, I'm Dick Rockwood from Rockwood Design. We did the architectural, the current architectural work. We were not involved with the permitting on the first phase, but we got involved to really pull the project together in the finer details. And colleague Tobias works with me in the office. Probably easy to point at that at the, at the same time. So we, on the side of the building, there was a set of stairs coming up the building right here and there was not enough headroom on this roof. So the third floor, second floor showed the stairs going up, but you would have been sloping and hitting your head on that roof. So there's a little bit of an oak cropping here of a dormer on this side. This one was always here, the one you're looking at there, but there's a smaller one over here that we had to put in. So there's the change. In doing that, there was...
It's a change from the existing special permit? I mean, we're talking about an existing special permit.
Yes.
Yes.
This, this is the house that burned down?
Yes. This is the house that burned down.
Remember that one? Remember that one?
Yeah, I do remember that.
Do you want to hear the two, what was approved, two?
So do you mind just speaking into the microphone?
Yes. All right.
Can I take that? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So let me know when to go on.
Sure. Go ahead.
So the other thing that was mentioned at the approval is that we're going to add a spiral staircase out here, even though it wasn't shown on a drawing, which meant...
Is it reflected in the opinion, in the, in the approval?
Yeah, it's reflected in that drawing.
No, when we came here the first time and you guys approved it, the spot, we were trying to figure out a way to get onto the roof.
There was no...
There was no spiral. We came up with that after, then we went away with it and Dick came up with the hatch.
Yeah.
Was, was there a deck up in the top?
Yes.
Okay.
There was originally a deck up there. We were trying to figure out a way to get up there.
Okay.
So, so I came up, I've done this product before. It's a roof hatch, but it actually works with the stairs, which I can show you on the cross-sections. You literally walk up and flip the roof hatch over. It's safer. You don't have a hole that someone's going to fall down. And now we don't need to have a spiral staircase or a deck protruding out to it.
You keep talking about spiral staircase. Is the spiral staircase approved?
It was discussed at the approval time. I don't know.
Yeah, it was just a point of discussion of the design meeting. They were, you know, we were just openly discussing as far as access to get up there and they were pointing out, you know, it was a collaborative, you know.
At the, was that the zoning?
Yes.
That was at the design.
Okay, that was at the...
The designing board was trying to give us ideas on how to get up there and the roof deck was existing before and I don't think we, did we even discuss anything out there at this meeting?
The hatch, the hatch was discussed. I think the hatch was discussed. One of the ones that, you know, just in the...
Right in the form.
...to go up, but it was never really ironed out.
So the deck was on the previous drawings that were approved and what I have added was this small structure here for a roof hatch, which doesn't affect the overall height. We've changed nothing as far as the overall height or anything else with the volume of the building other than this little dormer here, which is not that one, but you can see it on the other. If you want to go to the next page, I think it shows in the other side view. This right here, this is, this is the stair line on the inside, even to get to the second floor, so I needed some headroom in order to do that.
What's existing and approved?
Everything but the dorm, pretty much.
Everything but this?
Yes.
Right here was, was existing.
All right. The board have questions?
Someday we've got to have a calculation as to what portion of the roof. If you were to look at the average height of the midline of the roof, this adds to it, adds to the height.
Getting higher.
And if we're at 28 feet 8 inches now, but we don't have that. It's still loosey-goosey as to where the midline of the roof is.
The midline of the roof would still be right here. I don't believe that the hatch is reflected...
Right where?
Is right here is the midline of the roof.
That's not what the diagram shows.
Actually, it's right here. The mid, right there, I'm sorry, equal, equal. There's the midline of this roof. This was right off of the approved drawings on this, between the even there as far as where the midline was.
So you just said equal, equal.
Right.
The upper equal goes up to the top of the new section, right?
Or... Goes up to the top of this?
Well, or...
Well, that's, well, we're here to ask, that's a hatch, but it's not the main roof of the house.
Jim, have you looked at this?
I have looked at it and while this read is in regards to building height and we dealt with this on another property, which again, doesn't set precedence, but height does not can, the bulkhead access to that top does not contribute to building height according to the zoning bylaw. So the building height didn't change in this at all?
When you say bulkhead, I mean, we...
So here, here's what the code says and I'll read it to you.
Sure, thank you.
I'm just going to cut out the first line because it just reflect, it refers to the 30-foot height. What it says is the limitations in height in feet shall not apply to chimneys, elevators, poles, ventilators, skylights, tanks, bulkheads, and other accessory structural features usually carried above roofs nor to domes, towers, or spires of churches or other buildings provided such features are in no way used for living purposes and further provide that no structural features shall exceed 65 feet.
Which one of these, those features you just listed, do you think this falls under? Bulkhead or...
Well, I would consider that, yeah.
And it's not used for a living purpose?
Well, no. I mean, it's, it's an access to the place. It's not much different than we did on the 13 Sisters project where they built an elevator shaft and we had them add stairs to it and create a much larger bulkhead that is, you've seen it if you've been down that way.
Yeah, it looks kind of funny looking.
It's goofy and I don't agree with what input that made that build the way it was, but it didn't contribute to that because we considered that a bulkhead.
All we're doing today is determining whether we're going to need a subsequent public hearing.
Correct. Whether this is insubstantial or substantial change.
Right. Does the board have a view on that issue?
I'm thinking about it.
I personally think we might need to have another hearing on it. And again, I think it needs to be clearly, clearly presented and it's confusing as presented.
I'm confused by what was permitted initially versus what's being, the changes that are being requested here. That's what, that's what has me a little bit puzzled. I'd like to be able to see the two of them side by side to be able to determine if it is a substantial change or not.
I am completely in agreement with everybody who's talked so far.
I think, I think if you give us a second, we do have access to that and I think Lauren's just trying to grab that up so you can get a visual on what was approved from the original special permit. I do have a paper copy of it here. I don't know, it doesn't help Judy, Tanya in the field.
I just wanted to see if it's the same. It was the same.
October 30th. I think it's the same. Like from four, it's in the bottom corner.
There it is, what's on the screen right now.
So you have the same...
Okay, so this is what was approved.
That's what was approved.
All right.
Same side.
Would you mind scrolling down a little bit, please? Thank you.
I don't know, but my view on this is that these are changes, these properties that result in very, very significant height differentials from what was existing and now we're going up higher and calling it a bulkhead. I, I think we should have a public hearing about it.
I would think the neighbor ought to be notified, the design review board ought to weigh in on it, et cetera.
They have, but the DRB has.
What did they say?
They're okay with it. They, there were several, they can't leave that. There were three issues that they raised, including slats.
Thank you.
The proposed air clad in the same material as the mass of the building facade crawl space masked with vertical slats separated by a one-inch gap and railings be uniform, either ballisters or wire cables, but not both.
The design review board indicated that the proposed revision would replace a spiral staircase.
That was never approved.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it was just discussed that that's how...
My mind... That was to be interior though, right?
No, it was to be on the back deck.
It was, and, but...
But it wasn't on the plan.
But it wasn't, no, it was just discussed that...
It was on the plan, but not in the elevations.
It wasn't on the plan that originally got approved. We were trying to figure out a way to get onto the roof.
Oh, okay.
And we discussed the hatch in the form or spiral staircase.
All right. I am not prepared to devote today, today that this is an insubstantial change to this project.
Okay.
And if other folks are, they can weigh in, but my, my mind is I will vote that we should have, that this is a substantial change and that we should have a further public hearing. And in fact, I'm going to so move.
I'll second that, Wayne. I agree with you.
All in favor? Aye, Wayne.
Aye, Judy.
Aye, Phil.
Aye, mine.
Aye, Freeman.
All right. We're going to have a public hearing going forward, full public hearing where the neighbors are invited to come in and we'll go forward from there.
Okay.
What meeting minutes do we have?
We have, let me stop sharing my screen, sorry. We have minutes from December 12, 2024. Wayne Dennison, Judith Barrett, Freeman Boynton Jr., Emmett Sheehan.
I move that we approve them as drafted.
I'll second that, Wayne.
All in favor? Aye, Wayne.
Aye, Judy.
Aye, Freeman.
Aye, Phil.
Minutes from January 9, 2025. Tanya Travazan, Philip Thorne, Freeman Boynton Jr.
Why do you guys have to move?
Thank you. I'll move to extended minutes.
Second.
Oh, we don't, hold on, okay.
All in favor?
The last, no, you're right, sorry. The last set, January 23, 2025. Judith Barrett, Philip Thorne, Freeman Boynton Jr., Wayne Dennison.
All right. I move that all the minutes we're considering be, be approved as drafted.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, Wayne.
Aye, Phil. Aye, Freeman.
That's all.
All right. All right. I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, Wayne.
Aye.
Aye, Judy.
Very good.